... authority to order Monday, May ni— excuse me, May. Wish it was May, November 19, 2018, 6 o'clock in the council chambers. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Arnone, Commissioner Bosco, Commissioner Sacala—
Here.
Commissioner Crisati, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Denny—
Here.
Commissioner Fogg—
Here.
Chairman Ludwig—
Here.
Commissioner Mueller—
Here.
Vice Chairman Suzak—
Here.
Commissioner Angier—
Here.
We have seven commissioners present, four are absent.
Item number— or first item, special guest, Woodard and Kern, and their presentation. Folks, please come up, and just your name and title would be great.
Jay Sheehan with Woodard and Kern. We're at 1699 Elm Street in Enfield.
Toby Feder with Woodard and Kern.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, just by way of introduction, we had had a special meeting as well, I think, the month before last, and there were questions from the public in regard to water pollution control rates. So, we had promised, as a result of those questions, to bring Woodard and Kern here because they were our consultants and advised the council over the years in regard to the present structure. I also have present Donald Nunes from Public Works, the director, in case any questions need to be directed to him, and also John Wilcox, who wasn't here during the inception of the program but has certainly been here during the last couple of years, during the implementation. So, that I think that will cover the bases. Hopefully, they can do their presentation. Council could inquire of any clarifications, and then we provide, again, as we said we would, a public section so they can make comments. There won't be a back and forth of answering, as we don't do that in public communication, but we will, again, take down those questions and provide answers and put it on our website. This also will go on our website, this presentation tomorrow. So, I turn it over to Woodard and Kern.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. So, we have a pretty— well, it's a robust agenda in some ways, so bear with us for a little bit. We don't expect to go on for 20 minutes, but it may be a solid 10. We will talk about the WPCA compliance timeline and why we're where we are, the evolution of the costs, and the evolution of the rate system. Definitions, we want to be clear, because we've been listening to hearings that we weren't at, and we've heard a lot of confusion from the public and others. So, we want to make sure we're very clear on what the definitions are of things. We'll talk about the rate system decisions, the rationale, the process, and especially the 2014 rates that were established, and then the 2019 increase, fiscal year 2019, which is this year, and then options moving forward and benchmarking.
Correct.
So, real quick, just to look at the compliance timeline, why the whole project started. In 1938, the WPCF and the collection system was built. In '95 was the last major upgrade to the system. So, it's been, you know, 20-plus years before anything's been done. And even that last major upgrade wasn't a full upgrade, it was just a piece of process that was handled. So, it's been closer to 40 years before things have happened at the plant. As a result of that, there was a series of notice of violations that the DEP issued to the town of Enfield. February 21st, 2012 was the last one, and it was the fifth one. Those notice of violations can result in up to a $25,000 per day fine for not being in compliance. So, this is what the town was facing. To show you the list of deficiencies, it's pretty extensive. We won't go through every one, but just know that there are five notice of violations, and then all these deficiencies were identified by the DEP. So, there was a lot of work that had to be done back in 2012. So, at that point, the town, in October 2012, said, "This is a little over ahead, so they need to hire a consultant." So, they went into a public process, RFQ qualification— actually, it was a cost-based selection on a capital study and rate plan. And we were selected in a competitive bid to do that first project. The first deadline for NOV compliance was January 2014. Again, by complying then, we wrote a little report to DEP that said, "Everything's fine," so that avoided a $25,000 fee. Then, in May 2015, we had another compliance deadline. Again, these fees are avoided. Then, in November 2015, famously, the $36 million sewer referendum passed, which is significant because that allowed for the funding to do some of the corrective measures that DEP was requiring. In November 2017, there was a deadline to do some construction improvements, but because of the good faith that the town showed, because of the way you handled the rates and going to a rate system, they extended that, so the fines don't kick in. Construction began this year, June 2018, and finally, we expect July 2020, the improvements to be completed. DEP actually has a $50,000 per day on those type of things if those are not completed by then. So, we're on schedule, and again, because of the good faith the town has showed, if something changes with the schedule, DEP's been there along the way, and they're ready to react and support the town.
So, my name's Toby Feder, as I said, and I was intimately involved in the completion of the rate study and presented it a number of times. I've provided a quick, just timeline of the costs that the WPCA is incurred in the course of— really, in the course of operations, and where those funds have come from. On the furthest left, you see the blue period is when ad valorem taxes were being used to fully fund operations. That was in fiscal '13, ending halfway through fiscal '14. At that time, the ad valorem taxes were generating around $3.1 million in operating funds per year. The big— one of the big pictures here being the change over time in the actual capital needs of the utility, capital and operational costs. The red star there, the one thing I will point out, when you made the switch from ad valorem over to an actual rate-based revenue generation scheme, the WPCA had amassed a $3.6 million debt to the Town General Fund, okay? And so, when we established rates, that was there on the books, and when we set the rates for the first five years, the goal was to begin to pay that off and—as well as support operations. And so, what you can see, then, is for the period from 2014 through the recently ended 2018, we had basically a two-tier rate structure that was volumetric purely, and that generated around $4.8 million per year. Now, the initial rate-set recommendations were for about $5.3 million a year in overall rate revenue generation, but decisions just made by the council to adjust for water time usage in the summer and watering and things along those lines reduced the actual revenue generation of the structure by something to the tune of around $450,000 per year. So, the actual revenue generation is around $4.8 million pretty consistently through that four-year period. Basically, in fiscal '19, this is where we have a big jump, and in commensurate with that jump, we knew we needed to reset, basically, or at least restructure the way that we were generating revenue. And you can see that we've jumped from a $4.8 million generation to somewhere up in the range of $7 million. Now, some of that—and we'll discuss this later on—was changed during the budgetary process, but when we set rates in April, that was the number that we were targeting. And as you recall, the switch there was simply to bring in fixed charges that were applied on a quarterly basis to customers based upon meter size, which is a very, very frequent practice in both water and wastewater industries. So, to Jay's earlier point, we did want to address, based on some of the things that we saw in the replay, the differences between a tax and a user fee. So, a tax is basically a charge imposed by an authority, and it's levying on the value of either income or property-owned. The ad valorem, obviously, is a tax levied upon real property, and that is what was used, as we said, through 2013. Now, everything else, and those can be flat fees, they can be fixed charges, they can be volumetric charges, within the industry are defined as user fees. And it is—the user fee is defined as a charge imposed to a customer, and it can be based on either fixed or volumetric characteristics. And, in truth, the recompletion, or at least the revisiting of the original rate study, was used to help us identify an appropriate blend, or at least a blend of charges and volumetric rates which would generate the volume of money that we needed every year, okay?
So, just a little bit more history of the rate program. So, in 2013, the—as I mentioned, there was an RFQ to go out to find a consult to help with the rate study. So, we were selected for that. And that was on March 15th, we presented council WPCA with a recommendation for rates. And it was a full financial review of the utility. We benchmarked Enfield against other utilities. We looked at the capital improvement recommendations, and it's, you know, important to note that we had recommended actually $42 million in capital, and in working with some of the steering committee, it was reduced down to $36 million. So, Enfield was getting a good, you know, a good value, if you will. We recommended at that time a flat user fee. So, that means, as Toby described, that's a flat rate, you know, X dollars per year for the users, in view of ad valorem. That was our recommendation, or in lieu of. The town, at the time, and town manager was very strong on equity, and that was the feeling that he had from the council and WPCA, is that equity—it was not equitable to charge a single person in a home and a family in a home the same amount, that it should be volumetric. So, we said, "Great. We still can do that. It's all about raising enough revenue." So, we went back to the drawing board, we adjusted the financial model, and came up with a system for that, a volumetric, you know, consumption-based system. So, the other thing that's important to note, and there's been a lot of kind of conjecture about how we got from ad valorem. It's very clear. This is not ambiguous. Chapter 103 of the state code, Section 267, on use of funds, says that sewer funding shall be kept separate from other kinds of funding in a municipality. So, Enfield wasn't doing that. That meant that the plant ran down. So, for 40 or 50 years, you were not funding the plant the way a normal WPCA would fund the plant, and that's just a fact. And it was before, you know, we were all there. So, to get Connecticut DEP funding, which on this project is $6 million in grants and about a $24 million, 2% loan under the state revolving funds, there's a requirement to capture these funds, a durable—and those are important words—a durable and dedicated revenue stream is required. So, that's where some different type of funding system has to happen. Furthermore, well, so, in 2013, the town manager recommended that, and town council, WPCA approved, a consumption-based sewer system. And the ad valorem system that had underfunded the WPCA, as Toby mentioned, by about 3.6 million. So, that was borrowed to just pay, so now that had to be paid back. Because of all this, you know, conversation about why did we even change, your finance director, John Wilcox, went directly back to DEP, said, "Did we have to do this?" And so, on November 9th, DEP answered the question, and it was Jen Perry, who was the Assistant Director of Infrastructure Management with DEP. She said, and this is a quote, "Enfield must remain on a dedicated user charge system in order to main CWF financing. Staff would also recommend an increase in rates to address the deficiencies and ensure that effective operation and maintenance of the system." So, she went a little further by saying, "Raise the rates," but that wasn't the question. And then, as mentioned, there's even state regs, 22A-482, which would make an ad valorem system—if Enfield switched back, would make you ineligible for that $6 million in grants and the loan amounts. So, we just—we've heard a lot about that. We saw it at the meeting, and we just want to make sure it's very clear that this wasn't a flip decision, and it was a recommendation from staff. So, after the rate study, capital plan, council modified sewer Article 86, and then WPCA council approved rates, financed our consumptive billing in 2014. The sewer fee schedule was amended to reduce the connection fees. So, we had a certain target. We reduced the connection fees. We gave some allotments for there. Then, there was a reduction for irrigation and pools. So, we took a little bit more out of the revenue we're trying to generate.
Just to be clear, though, those were not Woodard and Kern's recommendations. Those were decisions taken independent of our council.
Yep. We always support whatever council WPCA does, so we'll—we always go back to the drawing board, tell you the—you know, we have memos on each of those situations. We worked with town management, et cetera. But, you know, it's not—that wasn't our recommendation. On April 8th, 2015, council's provided—so, the council at that point—so, now you're a few years into it—asked the finance director at the time, Lynn Nenney, to do a five-year quarterly update. So, "How are we doing on revenues?" We were not involved in that either, but she reported back. In June 2017, we were asked—Woodard and Kern was hired again to do a three-year finance audit, to check back in. So, that's where we got to today. So, that's important to provide the context. In the spring, we came back with a recommendation after our audit, and council WPCA said that we should have a bipartisan subcommittee and have some meetings. And there were four total meetings, two subcommittee meetings, and then two with WPCA council. And then, at that point, new rates with fixed charges began. But, those are few meetings, but we've had more than 16 meetings with council and WPCA since this rate issue came up. So, again, there was some kind of intimation from—or, you know, from the public or whoever that said, "This happened under the cover of darkness." There were 16 meetings with, you know, council and WPCA. So, we didn't sneak anything by anyone. This is all up and up. Okay.
Sure. So, basically, the fiscal '18 financial audit, effectively, you know, we went back and we took a look at what the revenue performance had been, why we had—why we had the delta between the 5.3 rate—the 5.3 revenue generation that was in the original rate design and the 4.8 that was actually occurring between 2014, 2018. But, in essence, we came back, we documented the performance. In truth, the rates were working, with exception of the modifications done afterwards, pretty much as intended, which gives us a lot of confidence in the model itself. But, basically, where we stand now, at the end of fiscal '18, is that we still have about $2.5 million to repay to the general fund. That's from the original $3.6 million, and it was always intended that the revenue generation of the 2014 rate set would do that. It just was originally intended it would do it more quickly because it would have, you know, increased the revenues. But, again, to my point earlier, the big change that happened as part of the rate setting that came out of the sort of—the audit was looking at the coming fiscal cycle, fiscal '19, that we've just entered and we've adopted the new rate structure for. In effect, we went from a situation where we knew we had a rate structure that would generate 4.8 million. We were going to a situation where we identified a need to generate 6.75. As I indicated, you guys, meaning the council and the WPCA board, made some modifications to your budget, and you also made some modifications to the recommended rates that came out of the rate update. We wrote a memo in June, and I'd be happy to hand these out a little bit later, both the actual rate study report, as well as the memo in June. They told—we basically indicated to Mr. Bilmus what we thought the likely financial outcome of the adopted rates was, and I'll hand those out at the end of the meeting. But, in essence, we think your current rates are going to generate around 6.2. That would look like a $550,000 deficit, but you've also cut spending significantly, and as long as we aren't going to be trying to pay down debt, in truth, you're going to be probably fairly close this year. We did—working with Mr. Wilcox, we took a look at your financials year-to-date, and the revenue generation of the program is working as expected to generate a little bit over $6.2 million. So, we feel confident that you'll be able to land the ship as long as we don't have an upset in, really, the consumption that's used in the latter part of the year. Now, a big part of the jump in revenues, of course, because you only changed your volumetric rates quite minimally, increased by 1.2%, the big jump in revenues between that $4.8 million number and the 6.75 revised to 6.2 is all associated with the fixed charges that were instituted as part of the fiscal cycle. And so, that basically being where we are, the big thing to note here is we can foresee, knowing what your future debt service requirements are going to be, and adding those on to your existing operating budgets. And the debt service, just to be clear, as Jay indicated, the financing package from CT Deep is for $2.4 million at 2%. So, those—the—I'm sorry?
24.
24. Oh, I did say 2.4. Pardon me. At 2.0%. And, obviously, as the construction proceeds, you're going to need to begin to pay on that note, similar to having a mortgage. And we need to account for that when we start to design rates for the future and estimate what we're going to need to raise from our revenue structures.
Do you want to talk about the study before we move on to the financials?
Oh, yes. Just to be very clear, my apologies, Jay. On this figure that you see in front of you on the right-hand side of this slide, we know that the study was recently completed by Novak Company, recommending some changes to the budgeting. Those are not included within the numbers that are on this slide. We could include them, and in truth, if the town decides to enact those changes, we will need to modify the expectations for the future. Truth, it would drive up costs by about a half-million dollar a year is the closest that we can—that we've heard right now, so.
So, just going back to the bipartisan subcommittee for a moment, that was March 5th. There's—the members are listed, and there was a very clear goals that the subcommittee tried to define. So, to fully break even in fiscal year 2019. So, break even. So, you're really doing that, as Toby suggests, due to state impacts on town budget, of course, too. Fully fund operational capital costs, WPCA. Make sure it was equitable. That's an important piece. So, that's—we'll get back to that in a second. Repay to the deficit to the general fund over time, and we're not paying down as much as perhaps we would like at the moment because of some other choices, but we're still, you know, funding at current rates. And then, build adequate reserves, and that's the other thing that's not happening. We're not really building reserves as it goes. So, with that, you know, there were options. The volumetric rate increase. So, right now, you had volumetrics. So, it's measured consumption, and you could just increase the rate at which you're multiplying—the multiplier for the consumption. That was one way. It would have to go as much as 40%, which is a pretty big number. And then, it would have to go up over time. Then, there's fixed charges, which are the meter fees, which we also clearly hear people aren't thrilled with meter fees. But, that's a very common practice in the industry because fixing a certain part of the budget gets you away from this, you know, the water cycle, and people using more, using less, using more. So, you have a fixed income, and then you have some volumetric for equity. And that also mattered because there's a lot of people paying minimums, and the minimum was absurdly low from the way it was started.
$13 a quarter.
$13 a quarter, which is, you know, just really low, and you'll see, because we'll compare to some other towns. Then, there was—we could just do what we originally recommended, which is just go to a flat rate, just a certain number that would go to every residential user, and that would be the same for the single family or the single individual that lived in a home. Or, we could return to ad valorem, even for a portion of, you know, maybe just the capital, but that's certainly not a preferred option because we saw DEP's strong feelings on ad valorem. It would represent about a 2.31 mil rate increase, but we're not sure we can even do it, to be honest, with DEP. So, equitability. So, what did the subcommittee decide? Subcommittee liked a combination of a volumetric rate increase and establishing a fixed charge. So, that combination would kind of mollify that big change.
So, in the end, obviously, on the left-hand side of the table there, you see what we recommended coming out of the rate study from the standpoint of generating the adequate level of revenues that we were targeting, based on the original budgets. Again, as I said, this was done in April. After the budgeting went through, and I believe the WPCA board and council considered, you elected to reduce the fixed charge from $10 a month for the 5/8 inch meter customer down to $7 a month, and you took our recommended volumetric rate increase from 3% down to 1.2%. So, those were the—basically, the two primary things. We also made some adjustments based upon three years of actual billings to reflect some well-water customers, actual probable usage based on similar characteristics of similar customers. And, obviously, the changes between the two, the first set was designed to generate just under $7 million. And the second set is, we believe, going to likely generate you just under $6.25 million in the current fiscal cycle. And so, really, the—you know, we received a lot of feedback that you wanted to know what some options might be. And so, what we've provided on this table is basically some fiscal year numbers for the current fiscal cycle, next fiscal cycle, and then also just out to fiscal 2023, after the debt service is fully rolled on to the budget. Because after that point, the escalation of the rates is unlikely to be quick, because at that point, you'll be dealing with, basically—you'll just be dealing with the inflation on salaries and certain other portions of the budget, as opposed to whole new sectors coming onto the budget like debt service and large capital outlays. So, just to describe this table effectively, what this shows is in the 2019, you have two bars. You have the recommended, which was going to generate $6.99 million, had a $10 monthly charge, and then that was your blend of rates. And then, if you—with the adopted, we're going to generate $6.23 million with a $7 charge, and basically, a slightly lower set of volumetric rates. Now, just to be clear, and there are some notes at the bottom of the table that describe what we've done here. We were asked to be able to provide a guidance level. These wouldn't be numbers that I'd want you to go to the bank with right now, but they're going to be quite close. We basically pulled out the residential revenue generation. So, if you wanted to go with a flat fee, along the lines of some of the other communities in the area, this is what we would be looking at for, basically, the current fiscal cycles. What we would have been looking at was a $300 to $310 charge, and then, in each of the next couple fiscal cycles, both with a—the original projection, and then the original projection with the actual costs associated with the Novak study added on. So, just wanted to give you guys some understanding of what you might be looking at under different scenarios going forward. And again, this table or this chart really just shows you where we've been. We were at a fairly low, comparatively, revenue generation under the ad valorem. We took a big jump up when we instituted the first set of rates. We're taking another big jump up as part of this fiscal cycle because that's what's going on with the spending, and that's going to drift up through fiscal '23 as debt service from the construction projects that are currently underway rolls on to the budget.
So, as we do this, and just a few more slides, so bear with us, we always want to look at benchmarking, because you can do it in a vacuum, and you could look at how it works in Enfield, and you got to say, "Well, jeez, is this comparable?" So, we did that in a couple different ways. So, we're benchmarking the capital improvement costs of the plant. That's the first thing. So, when you look at Enfield, it's one of the bigger plants that's been done. These are essentially all the plant upgrades that have happened over the last 10 years. Enfield—and this is not escalated money. So, these were the costs at the time they did the project. So, note that something that happened in 2012 for $42 million would probably be closer to $50-plus million today, in today's dollars. But, we did not escalate. You can see, Enfield's $36 million for a 10-MGD plant, 10-MGD being a pretty large plant, is very reasonable compared to, say, a Torrington, which is going $72 million going on right now. They just bid it, and they had to rebid it because they couldn't afford it, but it didn't get much better. And that's starting in 20—or starting this year, and that's a smaller plant. So, you got a good—a decent value from your staff and team that put this together. Looking at rates, it's important to look also there. What we did is we have a lot—I mean, we'll hand this out after as well, so you can have it, but you can see that all the comparable communities are listed on this table. We put their mil rates, their fiscal '19 mil rates, so you can compare. Enfield's at 33.4, but I think you'll see that that's—you know, you look at that—you look at that anyway when you do the budget, but it's pretty comparable to your neighbors. And then, when you look at the average monthly bill, the 2014 to 2018 rate was one of the lowest of these comparable neighbors. So, it was the third lowest at about $264. This is the volumetric rate. We just made the adjustment—or you just made the adjustment—to 350, which still keeps you in the top—or the lowest third of rates of sewer in these towns. And then, what we probably have to move to, to be responsible on the volumetric for 2023, is still—you know, it's not the highest in the state, it's not the lowest in the state, but it's a little above the midpoint. So, just as a point of reference. And then, we were trying to benchmark that against other utilities. So, this is current annual residential utility charges for Enfield residents. Roughly, an electric, you pay about $1,542 a year, the average user. This is just a average. Cable TV's about $980 a year. Cell phones are about $720. Hazardville Water, you're getting quite a bargain. It's $450 for those who live in Hazardville. Connecticut Water's about $750. So, there's a $300 swing between the two utilities. And then, sewer's right now $350. So, just to have some kind of, you know, context to what that is. So, just—in closing, you have some options going forward. You could stay with the current rate system, adding in fixed charges, and raising it over time, either fixed charges or the rates, or both combinations. You can go to a flat rate, which would be 360 per year per residential user. That's the midpoint, we see, which would rise to about 500 in 2023. And to do that, we'd really highly recommend another bipartisan subcommittee to kind of understand that and look at the costs. Or, and we don't even know if this is possible, but you could go back—go to a mil rate increase of 2.31. But, you have to. We know that you would have to stay with rates for some portion of it, because DEP will not allow you to do just mill—you know, ad valorem. But, you could explore that, and that would certainly require a lot more. But you could explore that, and that would certainly require a lot more looking. And then the last thing to just say is that, you know, I think sometimes consultants are, you know, and we heard a lot of words, but blame for being the bearers of bad news. We don't feel good about that, and more importantly, we are residents of the town of Enfield, so we pay these rates as residential, commercial users, or both, because we have employee, we have 20 employees in our office, we have some that live in Enfield and own houses. So they pay these rates, and then our company pays the rates. So we're not profiting from these rate increases. So any suggestions of such, it's just not, this hurts us as much as it hurts other people. So with that, any questions?
Well, again, fantastic. So just for the public, when this will be out on the website?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And any other questions we receive, we'll put out there. I think they've done a thorough job of giving the historical, because, you know, this happened over a course of many years. Some of you were here, some weren't, some residents were, some weren't. So it's kind of tough when you're looking at it in a patchwork fashion. This, I think, is a very good presentation of where we were, where we need to go. I would just like to stress that one of the important things, we are at about a status quo. Understanding because their recommended rates weren't completely adopted, because council and WPC and the subcommittee gave some consideration, understand that that debt of the 2.5 million we owe to the general fund is out there, and it's kind of like your mortgage. You know, maybe the bank would say, I know you're going through hard times, don't make your mortgage payment, all right? But you still owe it. So we're at this point going forward, maybe we won't be able to make any payments towards that. You're still going to have your operational costs, your electricity, your oil, all the other things you have to do at your home. I'll also say, though, one of the goals, and from my perspective, I think this is well thought out by the council and the subcommittee. When I look at it, I think the combination that you chose was equitable and fair, it addressed what we needed to do, and we're out there building that plant for the benefit of the town. It'll be done in two years. And we had a, I'm not going to say a gun to our head, but we certainly had a sword lifted over us by the DEP with those fines because we were so grossly out of compliance. So I think everybody acted appropriately here, from the council to Woodard and Curran. But I will let you know, if we keep it right now, as he said, we're keeping just above water, we're not going to pay our debt service. But of concern, and John Wilcox has some handouts about what DEP expects and requires, one of them is that you properly maintain your plant, and that you have sufficient money to address emergency situations. So understand, because we sort of gave a short-term hiatus and didn't fully implement their recommendations, we're not really having much to pay the debt service, and we're not doing the fund, the reserve fund that we, you had targeted to be about, I think, $1,002, $1,005. What does that mean? It means if we have an emergency, or there are repairs at the plant, you're going to again have to borrow a home equity loan to do them, and your mortgage, which is now 2.5 million that we owe the town, will go up. So I think in the long term, you know, better to do it appropriately and look at it during the next budget season. And to that end, I think that's where we should discuss it. If you want to consider a flat rate, we can get more information for them by the end of the year. If you want to continue where we are, the only wild card is the NOVAC report. I don't want to get into that, we've talked about it at the subcommittee, but basically, we throw, we froze three positions in the water pollution control. So here you're going to have a brand-new plant, minus three people to maintain it and to do repairs on it. Not really advisable, and they are actually recommending even an increase. So part of what we're talking about is when we do these projects, like the high school or JFK, or we place boilers, you've got to maintain them, you've got to have adequate staff and resources to maintain them, or we're going to find ourselves again in this situation, you know, in the future where we didn't, and it's going to be cost prohibitive again. Better to perhaps swallow the poison pill, address their concerns in the upcoming budget, maybe do your incremental up to 2023, paying back our debt, putting away the rainy day fund, and having appropriate people to maintain the facility. So we can discuss those, because our intent is to keep water pollution control on every month. We're not going to go back to the absentee landlord situation. I am going to the meetings, Director Nunes is, we'll keep you updated on the rates, John will keep you updated in governance on the revenues, and we'll keep you updated on the progress of all of this, but more importantly, during the budget, now you kind of know what the picture is. I think it's fair, and I think as always, there are some concerns, you can tweak little things, but we have a set amount of money we have to raise every year, and there's only two ways to do it. The way you're doing it are going to a flat fee, but there's no way to escape it. And we can't go back to the past where we're just borrowing from the general fund and putting our head in the sand and not properly maintaining it or paying for the upgrades that are due. We're going to have a brand-new spanking new plant, and we should take care of it, we should maintain it, and we should have people to do it, and we should have a fund without having to steal from Peter to pay Paul going forward. Again, it's part of our plan to be transparent with the public, to be honest with them, and to have a long-range plan going forward to address these things, so the next council or your grandchildren on the council won't have to grapple with these issues, because we'll plan so well, we'll have a surplus.
And the goal, too, is to have a Q&amp;A document where we put this out?
Well, what we'll do is, this is going to go up.
The definitions is great, I mean, that's a great, that's another great thing. So folks, if they have a question, they can send it, we can put it right out.
Yeah, and we'll update that. I think this addresses all the questions we've had to date as to the why, the where, how come we're here.
Right.
There's some handouts, we'll hand out the presentation as well. We have copies for the public, and we'll put it up tomorrow, and whatever that generates, we'll answer those every single month. But I think this hopefully answers a lot of the questions.
Very good presentation, very good. Any questions for members of the council?
I had just a general question, and again, I'm sorry, because I was back here in the '90s when we got underfunded by the, from the pilot money, and still, still to this day, it bugs me. They owe us 2.3 million of prison system. So when we had the next meeting, I want to make sure we have an update when they're going to go to OPM. And then the question becomes, when, so in your timeline, when did the prisons open from 1938 to 1995, which was one of the major changes, you know, to the cost of running the water pollution control? You know, I don't remember, Paul, I should know this, but I don't remember when we opened the prisons in town.
Sixty something.
And so then the question becomes, through this, as we look through this, and I saw, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the, I'm going to use the MGD or MGB, you call?
Million gallons per day.
With the potential of that plant when it's done, how do we or can we start surrounding towns, taking over theirs, and start generating some additional revenue with the size of that? And I'm a novice, so I apologize, but MGD, B, whatever you guys call it. I mean, there's an opportunity, I'm going to say, where we can actually maybe take other, other towns and maybe generate a fee, so we're not asking our taxpayers to fund, obviously, is what we're going to have to fund over the next 10 years.
Right.
So I just, you don't have to give me an answer, or if you want to, it'd be great.
So what you're referring to is generally known as regionalization.
Right.
And it's increasingly seen for municipal utilities that used to go on their own, simply because by all means, there is definitely economies of scale to be had in the wastewater, you know, conveyance and treatment business.
So can we maybe, as we get, I don't know if this is through the town manager, maybe start coming up a plan and maybe asking some surrounding towns as we go into the budget next year, even if it's one or two towns?
And I will say that during the facilities plan, we explored a little bit of that. We looked at Summers, and they have a small plant that if they need an upgrade, they're going to want to do something different. And we're very close to their sewer line, so it'd be very easy to connect to them. So we've had a conversation with their prior first-elect woman. It's something to keep at, you know, it's something to keep talking about. There's definitely some sewer issues in Suffield, particularly Lake Congamong, which is a little closer, it's a little far away, but they don't, you know, they have the wherewithal to bring it to their plant, so there's some opportunities, in other words. There's some things that could happen.
Just maybe for a future agenda and a while, because I agree with you, I want to meet.
We'll explore that.
Okay, on a monthly basis, so we can update.
And the two other items in regard to what the state owes us under the DOC agreement, we have talked to our consultant, Fuston O'Neill, they're going to report to me in the morning to find out, you know, when and how it's going to go on the state bonding commission for actions, so we'll have an update on that. And I think, Mayor, what I'm going to do, too, there was a very good article today in the Connecticut Mirror on the pilot program. I don't think people understand what it is.
Right.
The pilot program is payment in lieu of taxes. So we have large state facilities in our town, and we can't tax them. It was unfair. So many decades ago, when it was, you know, put into place, they said, well, we're going to come up with a, it's going to be less than your property tax, but it's going to be a payment in lieu of taxes that the state will pay you to reimburse. We're using your roads, we're in your town, and other impacts, so we'll come up with a formula. So the article today talked about the broken promise, because the state, from the 100% of the pilot program, which again was a fraction of what it would have been if we could have taxed, say, a corporation or a distribution center, has steadily declined from down to 40%. I think currently, the article today, and I read it quickly before the meeting, is 18 to 20, and reducing. So I mean, if they just honored that obligation, we would be able to meet ours much more easily.
And if we actually went back and looked at the deal that was negotiated back in the '90s, like early 2000s.
Right. So that broken promise is causing, it's been reduced every year, and last year most significantly reduced. Whether it will be restored, I cannot say, but it's important for the residents to know that was a promise made by the state that hasn't been kept. And as a result, it has been a shift to the property tax, where you've had to raise it to address that deficit and shortfall. But excellent article, if you go on the Connecticut Mirror, it was in today, and they're wondering what will this next legislature and governor do about that.
So I'll just say, fantastic presentation. I think this is exactly what we needed to actually go back in history, to let folks know over the last X amount, because I think there was a lot of confusion when this was passed back in 2014. So again, I appreciate the detail and the timeline, and quite frankly, the basically getting from A to B equals C, which is what, I think this is exactly what we need to do. We're trying to educate folks on why we're doing certain things. So I don't have any questions, I'm glad, I want to make sure that everyone knows, I don't know if we have put a press release out, saying, listen, go to this, here it is at the website. So again, it'll help, even the definitions alone for folks, because again, I think that's the biggest thing, is that people get confused on the definitions. And again, like I said, I don't blame consultants. I appreciate that you've come here and done this, because I think this has been very helpful. So I appreciate it, and thank you for bringing them, Deputy Mayor Suzak, I'm sorry, Commissioner Suzak.
How about if we just put in their next sewer bill that is available on the website? And I will tell you, I pay a lot of these bills, and, you know, the minimum one is now, what, $17.21, and then you have the $21 service fee. So, you know, and I'll tell you, the mid ones didn't change that much, my mid bills, they just.
I think, all I'll say is that I'm not, but clearly, both parties over the last X amount of years have been trying to be very fair. So whether you agree or disagree with it, and that's fine, but both parties clearly tried to be fair to the taxpayer, because I think I agree with you, the way the subcommittee selected the volume and the rate showed an understanding that they understand folks can't pay a $300 flat charge. I mean, I think that's the reality of the situation, so certainly, we'll take the criticism, but I'd rather get criticized for both parties trying to be fair. So I think, you know, over the last X amount of years. And so I think, you know, and you can see from the original recommendation, when they lowered the initial recommendation of revenue, and hindsight, you know, maybe we wish they didn't do it, but at the time, we've been in a recession for a number of years in this part of the state. I mean, I know the rest of the state maybe just started joining the party, but we've been in a recession for a while, so I don't criticize a past council for taking into account of what people's ability to pay, on both sides. So I think, I mean, I have to admit, I think both parties should be at least somewhat resolved the fact they've tried to be very fair. And that's all.
When you came up with your original estimate for revenue, and you took into account the fact that in the summer, people use more water, I guess, because when we took it out, it hurt your estimate.
That's correct.
And why didn't you take that into account in the first place? Because people water their lawns, people wash their cars, people fill their pools. Why would you include that in there in the first place?
Sure, so, you know, communities are allowed to adopt policies as they see so fit. We were not instructed to include it in the rate study. So generally speaking, you know, when you're attempting to, you know, attempting to, you know, get a projection of a revenue stream, and you have only one sort of weighing device, so to speak, that being water meters, we used the one weighing device that we had, which is the water meter readings for three years from Hazardville Water and Connecticut Water, to basically generate how many bills of sewerage were going to be used. Now, the, sort of the side impact of when you make a blanket application of saying, well, we're going to say you only use 90% of your water as sewer every summer, and you apply that equally to all customers, it doesn't change the revenue that's derived from any single customer. Right? Because.
But apparently, it did.
It did, but that was after we'd set rates. If you had told me going in, into the 2014 rate study, that we want you to assume that, you know, we'll only build 90 gallons for every 100 gallons of water on the sewer side, we would have adjusted the actual consumption that went into the model, and you would have ended up with a higher volumetric rate, just applied to fewer gallons, but the dollars would have been the same, because the rates are always designed to generate enough money to cover the utilities' costs.
What I can't understand, though, is you're the experts, you do this all the time, and yet you made a false assumption, and now we're in a hole.
I'm not sure that's an accurate characterization. I could take you to many communities in Connecticut that don't adjust summer consumption, and I could take you to others that do. So that's a, that's a selection made by the community.
Well, obviously, and Mike pointed it out, the fact that the committee and the council or the Water Pollution Control Authority took that into account for the fact that people weren't putting it down the sewer line, it was going in the grass. I was one of those that came before them and complained because I didn't want to have to pay taxes. My normal bill was like $80 for three months. In the summertime, I'm $500 to $700. You kidding me, pay a fee, a sewer fee on what's going in the grass at that amount?
I'm not saying you're not reasonable in that expectation, but when I'm asked to set rates, I do have to make some assumptions, and in light of the data that we had available. And so just to be very clear, in the 2018 study, that was taken into account. So the rates that are now in force, that was taken into account on the revenue generation. In the original study completed in 2013, we had no basis to understand what a sort of adjustment would be made. We know that quite a few folks have put in deduct meters at this point, and appropriately so. You know, I take, I have no, I'm really agnostic as to what policies the town should be allowed to allow people to put in. It's, I'm here to try and help you understand, in order to raise revenues of X number of dollars, here are a set of rates that will do so with a given set of policies. And some of the policies after the initial rate set, after you heard from your constituents, were changed, and that's okay. We accounted for them the next time we went around.
But I just want to point out one other thing. When we did do the original rate, we did not take water consumption at 100%. We factored in a reduction in water use based on a sewer program. We, absolutely was in the original assumptions. It wasn't just 100% times the rate. We brought in a slight decrease. It's just we expected to continue to have, the deduct meters made a much bigger decrease than we ever anticipated. Does that make sense? Because there are industry standards for the amount of.
Counselor Denny, then, I know there's two folks here, at least, I think, want to speak, and we have 10 minutes left, so go ahead, Counselor Denny, why don't you give them?
The question I have is, if we go to a flat rate, will we save money in a sense that we will eliminate this company that we hired, and we won't be paying the water companies to monitor our well, our meters? Yes?
You would certainly save some money, absolutely. The numbers that I've shown today are basically provided for residential and non-residential, so we assumed all non-residential customers would continue to be billed under the current practices as recommended in the 2018 study.
Correct.
But for residential folks, yes, you would save significant administrative.
Because there's no monitoring of the meters from either water company.
Well, for a certain subset of the, of the commercial and industrial customers, you would still have.
And a possibility, maybe to the town manager or the mayor or whatever, but, and the possibility of eliminating a company that's billing us now, that we're using to bill everyone?
So again, you know, the idea would be to do the residential rates on flat, but the commercial industrial still based on water.
Still on the usage.
So there's still little billing, but it would be greatly reduced. I mean, the billing is not insignificant, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars a year.
We can ask Mr. Wilcox to look at that for our next meeting, together with some direction.
Yeah, I would like to see that. And also, the other thing I wanted to say, you're all, all talk about the website, but material in the town, in the town hall, so people can come and pick it up that are not privy to going on a website?
All right, we'll prepare a stack, and we'll put it at our information desk at the town hall at the entrance.
Because, you know, I have a lot of constituents that are not on the website, and they're not going to be.
All right.
Fair, very fair point.
Thank you, and you know what? We'll put 100 here, and we'll put 100 at the senior center. And then if we get a request for any other location, we'll put it there, too. And then if we get a request for any other location, we'll put it there too.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry at that, we want to make sure, I know there's at least two people who want to speak. I want to make sure they have time. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Would you like us to hand these out or should we just leave them at the desk and?
Yeah, whatever works for. So we have, the meeting said, it depends on how many people, I think there's two people here who want to speak, correct? So five minutes each, since you're the only two. Whoever wants to go first? Karen, five minutes.
Yeah, you can send them on.
Just to the. Name it, and again, specifically on a water pollution control. Thank you, Karen.
Absolutely. Karen LePlante, 166 North Maple Street. Okay, I've got a handout there, I'm handing out to you. And what it is, it's the three rate schedules that were included in all the public communications when we were setting these rates. The first one with the yellow was the first one that, for the public hearing that was set for May 7th. That showed an increase of, the 7% was highlighted for the consumption for seasonal adjustment, the $2.05, which ended up being a typo down, down the line and so forth. So after the public hearing, if you turn to page two, those were the approved rate schedules. The rates were lowered from the proposed rates before the public hearing, but still resulted in a rate increase for sewer users. Page three shows the rate schedule that was adopted at the last meeting on October 15th due to a typographical error. I would like you to go back to page one and ask you, how much do you think, by looking at this schedule, do you think that the well users would be charged? Would you safely assume a residential or small non-residential user would be charged 12,380 gallons at $3.49 per 1,000 gallons? I'll do the math for you. It comes out to $44.60. The rate in effect at the time was 43.32. This would be approximately a 3% increase in rates, reasonable for the average consumer. For the metered customers, the rate would go from 43.32 per quarter to 74.60 per quarter for the same amount of water. When you add the proposed ready to serve fee of $30, a whopping 72% increase, which I think I pointed out during the public hearing and that was the reason for some of the changes in the rates. If you notice on page one and on page two, there was never any mention of the ready to serve fixed quarterly charge for the private well-based rates. Not until we received our bills did we believe that we would be subject to the regular, ready to serve fixed fee. This is well users only I'm talking about. Page three, rates were adopted after your last meeting on October 15th due to a typographical error. According to Merriam-Webster's dictionary, definition of a typographical error is a mistake such as a misspelled word, a misspelled word in typed or printed text, such as, "The book contains a number of typographical errors." On the website dictionary.com, the definition is "an error in printed or typewritten matter resulting from striking an improper key of a keyboard from mechanical failure or the like." I believe it is possible that the 7% to the 7.5% might have been a typographical error. I believe the $2.05, which changed to $2.02 on the second rate and then to $2 on the third rate for the minimum delinquent fee, that could be a typographical error. But I do not agree, the whole phrase, "The ready to serve fixed quarterly charge for well users will be based on the smallest meter size," is a typographical error. Based on this error, my rates increased from 3% to 50%. At least the metered customers can adjust their consumption to lower their rates. Well users cannot. I urge you to remove the ready to serve fee from the well users' bills. Data I received from the previous town manager suggested 9,304 bills were charged the minimum of $13 from the second quarter of 2014 to the first quarter of 2015. With the increase of the minimum bill of at least 21, to at least $21, that takes into, these figures assume just a $21 fee, not the 31.50 and upwards for the $13 minimum charge, that amount would mean an additional $74,432 in revenue alone for those metered customers that were being billed the minimum $13 charge, if it remained the same. And that's just for 5/8 inch meters. I don't, okay. There are only 308 well users. By dropping this additional $21, you are only losing $25,956 in revenue. Remember, well users can do nothing to lower their rates. Metered customers are only billed for the water they use and so they can conserve water to lower their bills. We can't do anything. Also, according to some of the data I got, 15,045 customers are hooked up to the sewer. I have never seen data that ever showed any quarterly bill of 15,045 customers. It should always be more than that. There were some at 14,000, 14,969. They're not all being billed. Or prove to me they are.
Thank you, Karen, sir.
Hi, I'm Jared Donardis for Center Circle. I'm a professional at a wastewater treatment plant in another town, so I do have some working knowledge of how a treatment plant upgrade goes and I can understand how difficult everything can be with finances and everything going on. And I just wanted to voice my concern about the, I think the town manager said, the, I saw the meetings on the, on the slide and I do appreciate that. I just think with such a large asset that the town carries with such a large amount of money that's tied up with it, that a separate and finite WPCA beyond just the subcommittee would benefit not only the town, but the council and, and everyone involved. Because it is, it is such a, it is such a large and obviously it's very hard to deal with and it only gets more expensive. And that's basically what I wanted to say. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right.
Anyone else like to speak for the Water Police Control?
I'd like to speak for the Water Police Control. Here we go, thank you. I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
By Counselor, Commissioner Falk, seconded by Commissioner Denny. All those in favor, by show of hands. Post. Meeting's adjourned.
Welcome, everyone, calling the regular meeting of the Enfield Town Council, Monday, November 7, 19, 2018. Prayer by Councilman Bosco.
That's great, as I was hoping, I had it to the side, but we'll have to do it this way. Dear Lord, as we prepare for Thanksgiving this week, we pray a prayer of thankfulness. We thank you for food and remembering the hungry. We thank you for all our health and remembering the sick. We thank you for friends and remembering the friendless. We thank you for freedom and remember the enslaved. May you bless our country, state and town of Enfield through the holiday season and use all of us be a blessing to others. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Counselor Bosco.
Here.
Counselor Sikala.
Here.
Counselor Crissati. Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Denny.
Here.
Counselor Falk.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor, Counselor Mueller.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Here.
Counselor Ungary.
Here.
Counselor Arnone. There's nine members present, two are absent.
Item number four, fire evacuation announcement. In case of a fire, please orderly go to the exit, the back of the chambers, either go left or right, or out the doors to our left, to the audience's right, go through the first left door, down the stairs and out the doors into the parking lot, in case of a fire. Item number five, minutes of preceding meetings. Since we just had a meeting on Tuesday, I'm assuming the minutes aren't ready. So there's no minutes to approve. Item number six, special guests. I'd like to call the chief up first, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you once again for the opportunity to join you.
So you, you.
If it's, if it's appropriate, I can proceed with an explanation and then allow the council to proceed as it sees fit.
Go right ahead.
Annually, the United States Attorney's Office, based in New Haven, the U.S. Attorney's Office for Connecticut recognizes those officers that have gone above and beyond the call of duty, in particular in the area of community policing. As this year's request for nominations was advanced, one officer in particular came to mind, and that's Officer Eddie Nuno, who's seated behind me, who I believe the council may wish to speak to directly in just a few moments. The request from the U.S. Attorney's Office asks for the identification of those officers who have gone the extra mile, who have taken the extra step to work within their towns and their cities, to really impress upon the residents of our town and the members of the police department, the value in community policing. Officer Eddie Nuno is a 25-year Enfield Police Department veteran and as I shared with him a few moments ago, he still gets it, even after all those years. He's a veteran of the United States Coast Guard. He has served as the Enfield Police Department's representative to the town's juvenile review board. He is our liaison to the Enfield Youth Services Agency. It's fair to say that his bilingual ability makes him an official or unofficial ambassador to the town's Hispanic community. It is not unusual to travel through Thompsonville and see Officer Nuno interacting with members of the public. It is not unusual to see him speaking with business owners. It's not unusual to see him in the middle of a sporting event, stopping to play basketball with kids on the side of the street and really impressing upon them what it means to be a good citizen, what it means to be a member of this town and the relationship that we wish to have with the youth and the residents of our community. I have also been very pleased to let you know that Officer Nuno is, meets regularly with assorted landlord associations, works with business owners to make sure that they do everything possible to succeed. He's been a long-term field training officer of ours that allows him to pass his skills on to the next generation. It's the totality of these attributes that caused me immediately to recognize and recommend Officer Nuno for this recognition. I am very pleased to tell you that Officer Nuno was one of a handful of officers that were accepted and that were recognized by the U.S. Attorney's Office last month in this regard. Over the nine months that I have been with you, I have learned the skillset slowly but surely of the officers that I am honored to work with. And they have different skillsets and there are different times where I need those different officers. Officer Nuno consistently demonstrates the best of what EPD has to offer and I'm very pleased to be able to bring him with me this evening for recognition by the town council.
Thank you very much, sir.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say, when the chief brought this to our attentions and sent it and shared it with me as he does when officers are recognized, I sent it to council and you all immediately said, bring him here, so the entire town can join in this and celebrate and thank him. And I will tell you, I've known Officer Nuno for many, many, many years, all of my years here. And I have to tell you, as manager, it's heartening, in addition to everything the chief said, is more people than you can know, tell me in the street or Thompsonville or in town hall, we love Officer Nuno. And that's an accomplishment in today's times. So without further ado.
Mr. Mayor, he's joined by his wife this evening, Laura Jean.
Sir.
Proclamation honoring Community Policing Award recipient Officer Eddie G. Nuno. Whereas the United States Attorney's Office for the District of Connecticut recognizes Officer Eddie Nuno among 14 other law enforcement officers and community members from cities and towns across the state at a community policing award ceremony on October 30, 2018. And whereas in honoring the very best in community policing in Connecticut, U.S. Attorney, John H. Durham stated that these deserving law enforcement officers understand that community policing is an effective way to prevent crime, solve neighborhood problems, keep our citizens and towns safe and secure. They know that it is critically important to engage with members of the community in positive and friendly constructive ways long before a call for service. And whereas Officer Eddie Nuno is a 25-year veteran of the Enfield Police Department, after serving with the United States Coast Guard, he has worked in a variety of capacities over the course of his Enfield Police Department career. And whereas the Enfield is very fortunate that the officer, that in that Officer Nuno serves as a field training officer, placing him in a position to pass on the skills and a positive mindset that he possesses to the next generation of Enfield police officers. And whereas Officer Nuno serves as the Enfield Police Department's representative to the town's juvenile review board, as well as department's liaison to the Enfield Youth Services Agency. And whereas Officer Nuno is well-known, particularly in the Thompsonville section of town, for his regular community interaction, stopping to visit with community youth, meeting with landlord associations, helping businesses do everything possible to succeed. Now therefore, I, Michael Ludwig, Mayor of the town of Enfield, on behalf of the town council, the town administration, the entire community, do hereby congratulate Officer Eddie G. Nuno on receiving a Connecticut U.S. Attorney's Office's Community Policing Award as one of the most conscientious and committed officers in service today with a true dedication to the concept of community policing.
Well, I guess the, the glory to this award does not go to me. It goes to our Lord Jesus Christ. Without Him, there's, nothing good comes without God. So I would, the glory goes to Him for this award. Second of all, I'd like to thank Chief, Chief Fox for putting us in, for putting me in for this award and, and the town council for your support and Mr. Mayor, Ms. Deputy Mayor, your, your support as well. Mr. Bronson, as well, yours, sir. And I'd like to also thank my wife, who's been putting up with me for 25 years. And I'd like to also thank my wife, who's been putting up with me for 25 years. Lot has gone on in this line of work, lot of sacrifices. Unfortunately, my wife has taken the brunt of the sacrifice, and so a lot of this award goes to my wife. That's who I would award this to if I had to give it to somebody. So I thank you again. Thank you so much.
Keep up the good work. Keep up the good work. Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, well, before, I think Randy probably should have the same, right? Randy, do you want to be able to have a little...
Next item. Thank you, Chief.
Would you like to give a little...
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
A few words on the building committee.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Randy Dagel. And...
Good evening. My name's Randy Dagel. Every time I've spoken and I was part of this organization that I'm going to be talking about, I've always said I've been fortunate enough to be the chairman of this building committee, and I truly take that at heart. There's an old saying that nobody knows everything, but you surround yourself with a team that, and together we do. I was fortunate enough to have Wendy Osada as my vice chair and panel members, committee members, that supported and followed through with their obligation to this town. Some of us have been doing it for over seven years now for just this project alone. It was a diverse bunch of people, some in construction, some without, some parents, some business owners, but the one thing that we did, we respected everybody's opinion. Me in the construction field, I see things a little bit different than somebody in a business field or somebody that's a parent. So I was very, very fortunate to have such a unique building panel members, and at no point did any of them make a decision based on politics. There was never a Republican decision or Democrat decision. It was what was first, what was right for the kids, what was right for the taxpayers, and what was successful for the project. And I just commend everybody that was on this committee and the liaisons. A lot of them weren't here from the beginning, but those that were chosen, they volunteered to be liaisons. They showed up and they were at the meetings, and the information that they were able to bring back to allow you guys to support our decisions was second to none. So I appreciate it very much. I don't know if Wendy wanted to...
I just have one thing to add. Wendy Osada, 8 Windmill Road, and it has also been my honor to serve as the vice chairman for this committee. And then, don't forget, more than seven years ago, because pre-ref was before that, wasn't it? Yeah, okay, so it's been longer than that. And I just wanted to say, echo everything that Randy said. We were a very diverse bunch of people. I did not know the first thing about construction when I started in with this. I've learned a lot since then, by no means an expert, but this entire town owes a debt of gratitude to Randy, because I can tell you right now, without Randy Dagel as the chairman of this committee, we would not have finished, you know, ahead of schedule, under budget, and with the product that we did. So we're just extremely lucky to have had Randy and that he was willing to serve in this capacity for us. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Folks want to come? So we have a little, just a token of our, if folks from the building committee wouldn't mind coming up, we'll call you up, or do it one by one? All right? We have a little token of our appreciation. We have certificate of appreciations, signed by the deputy mayor and myself, for all the good folks who worked on the building committee. First person, Ms. Virginia Austin. Mr. Jason Kilty. Jason Kilty? Not here, sir.
He's not here, but I'll see that he gets it tomorrow morning.
Mr. Walter Cruzell.
Did you get two?
She got, yeah.
You got two there? You know, Walter started off as a committee member, and then he ran for the Board of Education, and he now sits as the chair and the liaison. Walter, how many notebooks do you have? He ran every penny, every financial.
This thing is one.
Yeah. So, Walter, special thank you, in recognition of being a member and then going on to the Board of Education.
On behalf of the board, I want to thank these guys, especially Randy, Wendy, and the rest of you, because you guys did all the work. I was just standing there, filling notebooks, that's all.
Okay. Yeah, we were going in alphabetical order. Randy Dagel?
Thank you very much.
Okay. So Randy, Randy's been on a number of building committees. I've known Randy since the mid-1990s. He's known to get it done, although so much time has to go behind him and clean up the mess. Good work. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you very much.
Doug Max Allen?
Thank you.
Again, Doug's another one of our people that served on a number of building committees. I've met Doug in the 1990s. He's done the fire building committees for their additions to North Thompsonville, and he's helped the town out on the elementary and the high school. So we have a lot of repeat people who have done a lot of work here in the town of Enfield. Thanks, Doug. And he sits on facilities, too.
Thank you.
There are another person, Joe Mueller. Joe, and Joe's another one of our people that, you know, started out on the building committee and ended up on town council. So, and he works at Estnuntuck, and he has a big asset to all our building committee and our building projects. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay. Jim Dusudov can't make it tonight, but I will see that he does get his certificate of appreciation. Wendy? Wendy Osada. She's such a ball of energy. Thanks, Wendy. George Stritch? George, Greg?
George.
Sorry, Greg. When you get in as much trouble as you do, it's good to have an alias. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you on other committees. Gina Sullivan. Gina, great job on the webpage and all the communication that you worked on with, it was Wendy, and with Laura Vella. Thank you. Laura Vella? Great job. Thank you so much. And we have two people that won't be here. They could not make the meeting, but I'd like them to get some recognition, and that was George Ripich, who started out as a building committee member and stepped up to do programming when Art left, and Lynn Skoll, who was our secretary and our conscience at times. But everybody's worked really hard, and I don't know, it'd be nice for the home audience if they would just all come and make a...
Can I make one?
You can make one more.
Thank you very much. There's one person that's been with Wendy and I for over seven years, and even though she's not a volunteer, but she has been there for, she's the one that's been at most meetings out of all of us. I just want to acknowledge Ellen Smith for everything you've done for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to say anything? All set?
You want to get a picture?
Want to get a picture?
Picture?
Yeah, we're going to move back and...
Take a picture. Take that for lying us.
And we got to give recognition to Tim Neville, who was our liaison from the Board of Ed.
I can zoom in afterwards. Everybody got it? I got like 10, so I'm good.
Very much.
If someone's eyes are closed during one of them.
Okay, all set with special... Item number seven, public communications. Would anyone like to speak for the council at this time?
Walter Cruzell, 21 Charney Road. Simple. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Anyone else I could speak for? It's tough to follow. Anyone else I could speak on public communications? Hearing none, declare public communication closed. Item number eight, council communications. Would anyone else, does the counselor have anything? Do we have a... Counselor Mueller?
Real quick, I served on the building committee with everyone, and it was a true honor to be on the committee, and all that wouldn't have been possible without Randy and Wendy. Thank you, and everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Ungary?
I want to thank the building committee for all their hard work, and thanks for coming here tonight. I wanted to announce about the Wreaths Across America Ceremony, which is going to be Saturday, December 15, at 12 noon. It will be held at St. Patrick's Cemetery in King Street in Enfield, and this ceremony will be simultaneously with the same ceremony in Arlington to honor our local heroes. And if you'd like to RSVP, you can, to vinnigrady@vinnigrady@cox.net. And if you'd like to purchase a wreath, you can go on the web with wreathsacrossamerica.org. Also, first readers had their ceremony, and they awarded all the certificates to the kids. It's really a fun event, and it's very rewarding. Their next ceremony will be March 11. Also, they're going to be having their trivia night. It's their one big fundraiser of the year, and that will be February 23. And I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move items E, F, G, H to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Second. Motion by Deputy Mayor Suzak, second by Counselor Denny. Any discussion on a motion to suspend the rules and move them miscellaneous? Hearing none by a show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Everyone's in favor and zero against. Anything else for council communications? The only thing I'd just like to add is that I know we're here, but tonight was the football team, our back in almost Thanksgiving Day football, was tonight at Enfield High, which the game, I think, kicked off at 6:00, even though we're missing it. But again, good news is that we now have almost Thanksgiving football back in the town of Enfield. So hopefully they're winning, and again, it'd be nice to kind of beat South Windsor. Not a big fan, but yeah, that'd be nice. So that's it. And the only other thing, too, last thing, the snow was real heavy on Wednesday, it seems like a while ago, and I know, again, I see it all the time, neighbors helping neighbors out with snow blowers. It was a real heavy snow. Again, nominate those neighbors who help you out. We want to honor those folks. Not the same people who helped you with the leaves. Again, I know this was a very heavy snow, and it's tough for some people to be able to move that snow if they don't have a snow blower. So nominate that neighbor who helped you out during the storm.
I have no formal report. I am available to answer any questions on the par.
Any questions for the manager? Counselor Mueller?
Is there an update on the light poles on Palumba? There was three there.
I know we had an update we passed on from Director Nunes, why there had been a slight delay, I think, in ordering. I can get an update for it, and forward to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the town manager?
Chris had one quick question, so I'm trying to find it in the par. Was on the, would Social Services come here December 3 meeting?
Excuse me?
Folks from, for special guests, it'll be Social Services?
I don't have the agenda in front of me. I know, I believe we have them slated to come.
Trying to find it in the par, sorry.
Between last week and this week.
Oh, so my question is, so can we make sure if we're going to have, whenever they're on the agenda for, that we can hand out the Enfield cares? We've gotten, so we've gotten some questions on if people want to voluntarily sign up, you know, if there's an emergency, we have, I know we've got some questions, and I know Don...
All right, so you reminded me, what we're going to do, I believe there are special guests continuing with, you know, education and presenting different programs. I believe we're, I don't have Don O'Nunes here any longer this evening, but we're going to be doing a presentation on the snow removal. And I would just say, you know, it wasn't a major nor Easter, but it was challenging in its own way, and I think Public Works, they did a very good job for us, unlike New York City. So I guess it isn't as simple as it looks, and they kept me updated, and I was able to keep the council updated, so I was appreciative of that. And what we'll do, they'll be here for that, to give a special presentation. And Social Services, Don has headed up a group for me in regard to updating you on our shelter provisions. So that what we're going to be doing, and part of that is Enfield cares, it's about two or three parts to it. One is we can have people sign up with special needs. We're going to do that through the police department, so they know if a storm event occurs, what to check on people and be able to check in with them. And she updated it. It's a really nice program that she's proposing. And then we'll be talking about the Enfield shelter, so people know where it is, how it's activated, how we'll communicate it, what they should bring, what they shouldn't bring. So in the event there is a snow event or some other power outage where we have to activate the shelter, it'll be a primer for individuals to know at least the ABCs and where they can look in advance. We've been out there, we've marked it, we have staff shirting, we have wristbands for people who come. So we really wanted to make sure, hopefully we're prepared, we won't need it, as my mom always said. So they've done a really good job on it, and she'll be here next meeting.
Perfect. It's a great program. I know we've been asked about it, and maybe to Counselor Denny's point earlier, instead of on the website, we put some handouts at the senior center for folks who don't have access.
She has a whole proposal.
Perfect, right. It's a great program. That's it. Any other questions for the town manager? Item number 10, town attorney report.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have a formal report, but I know that the property maintenance slash motor vehicle is on later in the agenda, so if you'd like to hear about it later, I can address it then.
Well, it won't come off the table, right, this meeting?
What we were going to do, our plan was, the council had asked that she have a workable draft for today. So you can take it on or off the table as you deem appropriate. We went to Development Services last Friday, they approved the draft, we sent it to the council over the weekend. So if council has questions, we could take it off the table. If not, what our proposal is, now that I think we've addressed all the public concerns, council concerns, and we have a viable document, that we would then proceed for the first meeting in December to actually put it on for the public hearing and for adoption. So it's up to you.
So we'll remove it from the table if anyone has any specific questions, so we do this legally? Okay? All right.
So we'll reach it then, take it off if there's questions. Because what we want to avoid is not answering any questions, having you look at it between now and that next meeting, and then having us have to go back and re-notice a public hearing and do it again. So we're trying to do it in a...
Maybe if we take it off the table, some of your ideas around how we're going to handle this?
Yes, the enforcement part of it.
Okay, so we'll make a motion, move it from the table. Yep, perfect. Thank you. Any other questions for the town attorney?
Not tonight.
Thank you, Maria. Item 11, report of special committees into the council. Counselor Falk?
Development Services met last week, and as the manager just said, we talked about the light ordinance and the, associated with the automobile ordinance. in its own way. And I think Public Works, they did a very good job for us, unlike New York City. So I guess it isn't as simple as it looks. And they kept me updated, and I was able to keep the council updated, so I was appreciative of that. And what we'll do, they'll be here for that, to give a special presentation. And Social Services, Dawn has headed up a group for me in regard to updating you on our shelter provisions. So that what we're going to be doing, and part of that is Enfield cares, it's about two or three parts to it. One is where we can have people sign up with special needs. We're going to do that through the Police Department, so they know if a storm event occurs, what to check on people and be able to check in with them. And she updated it. It's a really nice program that she's proposing. And then we'll be talking about the Enfield Shelter, so people know where it is, how it's activated, how we'll communicate it, what they should bring, what they shouldn't bring. So in the event there is a snow event or some other power outage where we have to activate the shelter, it'll be a primer for individuals to know at least the ABCs and where they can look in advance. We've been out there, we've marked it, we have staff shirting, we have wristbands for people who come. So we really wanted to make sure, hopefully, we're prepared, we won't need it, as my mom always said. So they've done a really good job on it, and she'll be here next meeting.
Perfect, it's a great program. I know we've been asked about it, and maybe to Counselor Denny's point earlier, instead of on the website, we put some handouts for, at the senior center, for folks who don't have access.
She has a whole proposal.
Perfect, great, because it's a great program. That's it. Any other questions for the town manager? Item number 10, Town Attorney Report.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have a formal report, but I know that the property maintenance slash motor vehicle is on later in the agenda, so if you'd like to hear about it later, I can address it then.
Well, it won't come off the table, right, this meeting?
What we were going to do, our plan was, the council had asked that she have a workable draft for today. So you can take it on or off the table as you deem appropriate. We went to Development Services last Friday, they approved the draft, we sent it to the council over the weekend. So if council has questions, we could take it off the table. If not, what our proposal is, now that I think we've addressed all the public concerns, council concerns, and we have a viable document, that we would then proceed for the first meeting in December, to actually put it on for the public hearing and for adoption. So it's up to you.
So we'll remove it from the table if anyone has any specific questions, so we do this legally? Okay?
All right. So we'll reach it then, take it off if there's questions. Because what we want to avoid is not answering any questions, having you look at it between now and that next meeting, and then having us have to go back and renotice a public hearing and do it again. So we're trying to do it in a...
And maybe if we take it off the table, some of your ideas around how we're going to handle this?
Yes, the enforcement part of it, right.
So we'll make a motion move from the table. Yep, perfect. Thank you. Any other questions for the Town Attorney? Thank you, Maria. Item 11, Report of Special Committees into the council. Counselor Falk.
Development Services met last week, and as the manager just said, we talked about the blight ordinance and the, associated with the automobile ordinance. And I think a copy was emailed out to all the council people, so you all have it. I would hope that we would have a discussion about it tonight. You're going to take it off the table, we'll talk about it, because there's some changes that we made, and others may have some additional changes they would like to make. We also talked a little bit about the TIF. We're still moving forward with preliminary type of policy for specific TIF zones. I know we talked about Thompsonville, the possibility of setting a TIF in other areas of town, such as Hazerville or Skidaco. Right now, we need to draft one, to get accustomed to what it should say and how it should be set up, so we can move forward with that. And Town Attorney's also been working on, I think it's Town Attorney, or maybe it was the Planning Department, the tax abatement policy. That was yours, right? We had drafted a policy for tax abatement merely as guidelines, and I brought that up because of the fact that we typically, as a council, would address those on a per-case basis. But the average Joe or average business out in town doesn't even know the policy exists. So I suggested that we had some guidelines available somewhere on the town website or elsewhere, so that these people would know that the program exists, so that they could at least ask or inquire or apply for it, and then we could consider their specific needs at that time. So that was up for discussion, and we'll have more discussion on that at a future date. Thank you.
Counselor Denny?
Public Works. Want to say anything? Well, the NOVAC, we went over the NOVAC report. It's going to be tweaked. We talked to the people at Public Works, they have some issues with people that they might not need that the NOVAC represented. I think we're going in the right direction with it. There was talk about an extra vehicle because of PM, and they're looking, and we're looking into purchasing a used trash truck, so they're talking about no night shifts and so forth and so on at Public Works. I guess that basically, Donna, you got something else?
Well, mainly.
An inch of trash, really have to, I think they're going to...
Okay, go ahead, yep, sorry, go ahead. Just want to make sure it was on the floor, go ahead.
It's looking for us to throw in a few comments, and I guess the fact that we need to be really conscientious about our recycle. Recycle costs us $10 a ton, trash costs us $70 a ton. A $60 differential is huge. And we have to be really conscientious about what we do, and we looked at higher tipper fees, and we also looked at maybe limiting how much people can throw away as trash. You know, you get one can, and you got to close the lid. So we're really looking at how do we do this better? How do other people who provide trash, how do they function? And how do they get, you know, the people who use their services to be reasonable about their use? And we're also looking at higher tipper fees at the dump, at the transfer station. So I thought it was a really good representation of the NOVAC report. I thought our staff did a great job of looking at everything. And, you know, putting a spin on it that this is, this could work in Enfield, and maybe with a little bit of tweaking, it could work a little better in Enfield.
Counselor Bosco?
Ultimately, we took the whole Public Works, and we turned it all upside down, and we're starting fresh. We're going to make all new ordinances for trash, to make it as efficient as possibly. We looked at how our garage runs, to make that run as efficiently as possible. So we're, we have a big task. It was over a two-hour meeting, and we looked at everything in DPW, and we're just going to restructure everything, including water pollution control. We looked at all that. And it's all going to be done to get our biggest bang for our buck and to get the most out of what we have. And to be able to offer the best services to the residents of Enfield at the lowest cost as possible. And the only way we could do it is to look at it completely new with fresh eyes, and that's what the committee did. So we got a lot of work in front of us, and, but we're going to, when we get done, it should work out better, and some people aren't going to be happy, other ones are going to be tickled, but it's survival mode right now, and we need to keep things as tight as possible, because we can't afford any more tax increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Enger?
I'd like to say I've been attending the meetings with the Enfield Together Coalition, and they're working with youth services. Enfield Together Coalition is working for a drug-free community, and right now, our focus has turned to the faith-based community, and we think that's really an untapped resource. And so we've had meetings where we've invited a representative or leader of all the churches in the town of Enfield, and it's been very successful. We've had several meetings, the attendance is strong, the interest is strong, and so we're working on prevention with our young people. That seems to be the key. So I'll keep you posted on what our updates are and how it's progressing.
Great. Anyone else? And I'll just say, again, this is all, both parties, everyone in the council, this is their personal time, and they've done, everyone's done a great job going to the subcommittees. We've gotten a lot of work done and started, which puts us in a much better place going into the budget next year, no matter what happens with our funding from the state. I mean, again, the members of both parties in the council are taking time out of their day and their work schedule. These are things during the day, and so again, I recommend everyone, of course, the staff as well, for being willing to get down and do some work. This is just another piece of work that both parties are doing, to kind of, again, prepare and to try, to Counselor Bosco's point, to provide the best service at the lowest cost. So again, I commend everybody, because I know it takes time out of your work schedules and your personal schedules. So again, thank you. Item number 12, Old Business. Item A, appointments 1 through 3, we have none. On page 2, appointments, Town Council, items 4 through 17, we have none. Page 3, Town Council appointments, item 18 and 19, again, we have none. On page 3, item B, appointments, Town Manager. Items 1 through 12, we have none. Items 13 and 14, again, we have none. Item C, discussion resolution to adopt amendments to the Enfield Town Code, Chapter 38, Article 5, Sections 38-141 through 38-145 inclusive. Do I have a motion to remove the table? By Counselor Falk, seconded by Counselor Denny. All those in favor removing from the table by a show of hands? Those opposed? Any abstentions? All in favor, zero against, no abstentions? So this is the Town Attorney, Maria, this is the amendment to the, I guess, the car ordinance, for lack of a better word, that we've, we had a meeting, I think, a month and a half ago, and this is sort of what we talked about a little bit with the Town Attorney Report. So I will, if you want to give a brief update, you...
I'd be happy to.
Department, the Subcommittee, Department of Development Services met, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Okay, just to kind of go back in time briefly, on October 1st, you had a public hearing. Sit down. On October 1st, you had a public hearing. It came to light that the few suggestions that were made by the enforcement officer, who at the time was Sergeant Meyer, were just, I guess, the beginning of some of the changes that maybe needed to be made. The public was heard, the council had some input. So in the aftermath of that, we were directed to look at making some of the following changes, and just bear with me, some of this is a little bit detailed, but I just want to set the stage for why what you had in front of you over the weekend did not mirror what was discussed in the aftermath of that October 1st meeting. So people talked about the unmanageable title, they were concerned about the definitions of inoperable and unregistered and unsightly. The discussion around deleting registration was brought up, because the real issue was junk cars. There were concerns about whether or not then you would be able to get the tax money. There's still an obligation to have taxes paid. One of the residents noticed that the unsightly material section was really redundant to have it in that section, since property maintenance already had jurisdiction. There were some concerns about possibly including a permitting requirement. There was an interest in having more enforcement of motor vehicles be like property maintenance, so that it would be removed from the police and be brought over to property maintenance. There was also concern around including something like a blight review committee, and that phrase has come up a number of times, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on that right now, because that's going to be something for the council a little bit further down the line. So we met with the town manager and his staff, we discussed all those changes, we were directed to make some of them. The Development Services Committee, this was in the October 9th meeting, totally thought that that was a good idea as well. So we went about to make those changes. We revised the existing abandoned unsightly motor vehicles ordinance. When we sent that around in early November for staff comment, we got back a really good idea that was quite simple, but did not necessarily address all the other issues that I just mentioned. The suggestion was, since this is about really dealing with junk cars, why not, instead of having these two freestanding ordinances, one having to do with motor vehicles, one having to do with property maintenance, which you typically refer to as blight? And we'd still have to address blight review, which is nowhere yet, so if you were to include blight review within motor vehicles, you'd have to ultimately amend property maintenance anyway. So the suggestion was, rather than doing anything with motor vehicles, why don't you just put motor vehicles into property maintenance and repeal motor vehicles? So it simplifies a lot, since the enforcement was to mirror property maintenance. And what was happening is, as often is the case, when these ordinances get done in a piecemeal fashion, you know, over the course of five, 10, 20 years, they're trying to do the same things, but they have different draft orders, they don't really look the same, it makes it very confusing. So once the suggestion was made, and that too was brought to the manager and to Development Services, and there seemed to be some support for that. There were also changes recommended by enforcement personnel, and those changes are reflected in the draft that was sent to you over the weekend, and the draft that was sent was really revising property maintenance. The other suggestions that were beyond the scope of mirroring property maintenance were just tweaking some of the things that enforcement personnel have had an issue with, and they're very early on, things like some of the blight definitions, they're in red, expanding the, for example, the area of exterior wall, rather than being 25%, having it be 50%. And these are just things that the enforcement inspectors have seen come up repeatedly. So they, we inserted definitions that were related to motor vehicle that we had had in the motor vehicle ordinance. And we also added the blight review. So in response to the draft that was sent this weekend, we did get a couple of comments back from the deputy mayor, and they were related to some of the language in motor vehicle, and also clarifying the area where there is an exemption. And one of the things that the councils through the years have always been consistent about is if someone is buying a property and wants it to, wants to remediate it, they shouldn't be punished. Or if it's something where they're going to require a special permit, then to have a fine be accruing while they're trying to remedy things by either getting a special permit or building permit, it's just patently unfair. So the language related to special permit and exceptions, excuse me, exceptions, is in 14-185. And so that's been just clarified. There's nothing substantively different about that, it's just clear that if you, if you have that need to get a permit, or if you're a bona fide purchaser, you get this additional 30 days. And since it was, originally, it just said 30 days, it's not really realistic to expect to be able to get your permit and everything wrapped up within 30 days, so then you would have another 30 after that. It's just clear that you went ahead to get, you've gone through the process and you're trying to get the permit. And for those kinds of violations that don't require permits, something that just requires lawn mowing, you just get your 30 days and that's it. So I don't know if you have any specific questions about this one. To the extent that some of the concerns of the motor vehicle ordinance were not addressed in here, it was, and I'll let the town manager speak to it, but he felt that you could at least, some of those things can be addressed in other venues later on. But in terms of just streamlining the process and moving this ahead without a lot of difficulty, this might be the way to go. So if you have any questions, just let me know.
No, I would just like to thank the Town Attorney's Office and all of the people from Development Services, the committee, and all of our staff and our blight officers. This was a lot of work. It seems easy, it's not, because when you do one thing, it opens up something else. It's like opening Pandora's box. But I think as it evolved, it seemed, we've always, we talk about consolidation, let's streamline things, let's make them simpler for people to understand, this accomplishes that. I would add what Peter said at the Subcommittee meeting, it's never going to be perfect, but we've got to start someplace. I think this is a heck of a good start. And two of the most important things that it addressed, two of the most important concerns, I think, council had and even residents, for it to have teeth, and the previous, give a ticket, give a ticket, walk away, wasn't giving it teeth. Two, police are very busy doing other law enforcement things, and we really shouldn't be taxing them with this responsibility, when we get a lot of different officers who are new going out there, who've never done it before, so you get inconsistencies, and the public gets a perception they're not interested in doing it. It's not that, but they want to be doing police work, so we're taking it away, giving it to blight where it should be. And also the blight review committee. This gives us an opportunity to put this together, and after the administrative is done, and people have nowhere else to go, they then, according to what we've sent to you, and you can fine tune it, they can come and plead their case of hardship, for whatever reason, illness, handicap, whatever it is, to the council, and you can be a court of last resort for them. So I think it accomplishes a lot. It's not perfect. I like the saying, don't let the, you know, perfect be the enemy of the good. This is pretty darn good. We have time now for you to look at it, and we can receive any other input, because as Suzanne says, we can't put it on for the first meeting for the public hearing. Next meeting, we would set the public hearing. So we still have that window to get some input from you. Again, we've left some things out, but be not afraid, we're going to reconvene. I'm going to tell you truthfully, we sort of took a hiatus from the blighted properties, our top 10, we were really focusing in like a laser. I want to get back to that for a little bit. Once we pass this, then we'll come back and deal with the commercial aspects, you know, we have said that with, you know, unregistered, maybe from a zoning perspective, to use the best tools to address those other issues, wreckers and other commercial things that Joey has addressed. But this is really, really good, and I support it and I recommend it. Lastly, if you are inclined to do it, as I've told you, we'll have all the resolutions ready, because as of January 1st, we can change the funds. There's one position that we had funded, we have about $94,000 in it. I don't think it's an effective position, we haven't been able to fill it, so I've cannibalized it, I've chopped it up into four positions, a new blight officer, because as I've said before, and it bears repeating, to give this work to blight and double their workload, not give them the personnel, we're doomed to disaster. Two, our CEO has gotten his credentials and some of the certificates he need, we really have a need to have a full-time CEO, money we can allocate there. Thirdly, I do want a safety officer to help us with OSHA enforcement and doing accident investigations across the town, we have the money for that. And then lastly, we still have enough in the pie. As I've said, we've had difficulty getting hearing officers. It's terrible to run the whole football game and then fumble right when you're about to make the touchdown. And that's what we have now with hearing officers, it's very technical, what we have to do to make sure we've complied with the statutes, giving notice to people, giving them the right to hearing. We've had people over the years who have volunteered, quite frankly, it's like the old gray mayor, they're just too tired to do it, and they're not getting compensated. Some of them were, you know, local lawyers who did it as a volunteer, but they're actually losing money because they're paying their secretaries. It'll be a modicum, we'll open it up, there's nobody pre-designed, we'll let people apply, they just have to be able to do it. And we'll do a stipend to do the hearings under these ordinances, so now we know at the end, we will get it over and across the finish line. So I think it's a heck of a package, and I hope that you'll move favorably on it. We can, again, wait till the next meeting for any other comment, we could try to incorporate them or discuss it with you, but otherwise, we'll set the public hearing and do it in December. And again, this is another promise kept by the council and by staff, we looked at this, and you know what, we could have rushed it, we could have just done a couple of little changes, Scribner changes, that, you know, would have, okay, we did it, the case law, the police, we didn't do that. We really looked at this, and we dug in, and we made sure that we did the hard work to come up with a product that would be, would help our neighborhoods, would address the situation, would give it teeth, and I think it's a model ordinance when all is said and done.
I just wanted to thank Maria and Chris for a great job, plus all the backup staff that supported you in putting this together. And as I mentioned at the meeting Friday, there's no perfect document that's going to cover everything, so we could consider this like a living document. You approve something, give it a shot, and if you have problems, you can change it. But you got to move forward, and you got to start somewhere, and this is a good start, and I'm totally in favor of it. Thank you.
Actually, they were included as an exemption.
Okay. And we'll go over the other stuff. So what happens in the meantime now? We don't, we don't enforce what, what we haven't finished up on the commercial side?
I'm not sure I'm following you.
Well, is that, is the old ordinance...
It's still in effect. It's still in effect, right. Everything is, everything is status quo.
Everything stays the same, except for the stuff we changed.
Right.
Okay, good.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I think setting, this should be on the agenda, I know we'll talk about it, but yes, set in a public hearing. And again, and I know Maria and your staff took a lot of time doing this, and again, it gets Councilors Boscos, long-awaited BLIT board, you know, again, an appeal process, which I think some members of the community actually mentioned at the public hearing, you know, I mean, I think so, to your point, nothing's perfect, but give you credit for listening to the individuals who came to that meeting, who again, rightfully have been frustrated over the years that we've sort of, I don't want to use the word we didn't enforce it, but maybe, whatever, oh, you leave the word whatever there, and call it, and leave it at that, but I also agree with you, it shouldn't be a police matter, it makes complete sense to move it into zoning where it belongs, let the police do their job, you know, and, you know, let us, you know, enforce the zoning laws. So I think it's, I think it's a great step, and I read through it quickly, so I'm sure I'll have questions, but I appreciate the fact, I know you put a lot of time into it. Deputy Mayor Susak.
No, will that be out on the web for people to read before we schedule the public hearing?
Yes, that's the one thing I failed to say, we wanted also for the public to have, to be able to look at it after you, and Development Services gave your imprimatur to it, because that way, by the next meeting, before you set the, if there's a lot of other changes, then we'll push it a little bit, so that we don't want to do this again, we want to do it in one fell swoop, so we're going to put it on the website, and if we get feedback for the next meeting, it's certainly going to come to you, we'll make it to your attention, staff will review it to say we agree with this, we don't, you'll make the final decision to the language, and then we can set the public hearing that night.
Perfect.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
They really did do a great job, it's really a great, and also it gives rights to people that are in adjacent properties, because sometimes it might not be visible from the street, but it certainly is not slightly.
Do I have a motion to move back on the table?
Take a motion.
Councilor Bosco, seconded by Councilor Denny, all those in favor, keep it on the table. Any opposed, all in favor, zero against, so we're good. Item 13, new business, we have none on the consent agenda. Appointment, B, item B, we do not, that's not ready, right, that's not in our packet. Item C, no appointments for the town manager, and item D, no planning and zoning appointments, commission appointments, council approved. Item 14, items for discussion, item A, we don't have any consent agenda, item B, appointments by the town council, we have none. Item C, appointments by the town manager, again, none. Item D, P&amp;Z commission approved, council approved, appointed, council approved, we have none. Items E, F, G, and H have been moved to miscellaneous. So we moved to item 15, miscellaneous, and we have item E, request for transfer funds for police services stipend, sorry, one second, I'll get there. Okay, so this is, resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfers hereby made, to police services from overtime, 1-2-005-00-514-000 of $11,700, from general fund revenue, grants other state, grants other state 1-004-0000-460001 of $11,700, certified the funds are available on November 9, 2018, by John Wilcox, our Director of Finance, approved by the town manager, Chris Bronson, on 11/14/2018. By Councilor Falk, seconded by Deputy Mayor Susak, and this is just simply for the click and the ticket.
Click and a ticket, it's 100% reimbursed, it's a grant, and there's no budget impact, we do this twice a year, they want to be able to do this in November and December.
I'm assuming no questions on this? Hearing unrolled, call please.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Denny.
Four.
Councilor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
Eight in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item F. Sorry, one second. Discussion resolution for transfer of funds for EMS personnel of $108,804, resolved in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfers hereby made, from account 1-08-00092-584-000 of $108,804, unallocated charges contingency, from account 2-524-0000-48001 of $108,804, EMS revenue, general fund transfers to account 1-08-00092-593-035 of $108,004, unallocated transfer to EMS to account 2-5222000-511000 of $60,934, EMS salaries, account 2-5222000-521000 of $35,076, EMS health medical insurance, to account 2-5222000-521500 of $132, EMS life insurance, again, to account 2-5222000-522000 of $3,778, EMS social security, and to account 2-5222000-522100 of $884 to EMS Medicare, certified that the funds are available on November 15, 2018, by John Wilcox, our Director of Finance, approved by Chris Bronson, town manager, on 11/15/2018. By Councilor Sikala, seconded by Councilor Denny. Discussion on a resolution. Councilor Bosco?
I'm gonna, I'm not going to support this, I'm going to vote against it, I don't have a problem giving them the money and the extra help they need, but I would like to first go the avenue and talk to the fire departments. You know, they may be able to do something to alleviate part of our problem, which wouldn't cost the taxpayers any more money. If that failed, then I really don't have a problem with issuing the extra money, but I think that we owe it to the taxpayers to at least go to the fire department first and see if they'll work with us. And if we can't, then I have no problem, but I'm going to be a no vote for that reason.
Councilor Falk, then Councilor Denny.
I'm going to support it, only because it's a public safety need, and I believe the staffing level should be at 22, and I think we're at 19, and the people that are there are working extremely, a lot of overtime, and they're getting burnt out and frustrated. So I'll support it, but I do want to follow up on Joey's comment about the fire department, that's an untapped resource that we have. We have five fire districts in town, six firehouses in town, randomly strategic places all over town, and I think if you were fully staffed, the most you're going to put out is four ambulances on first shift. And you have a total of seven ambulances that are sitting there doing nothing. Those could be at a firehouse somewhere, and those firemen could be driving them to the scene, and they could also be driving, they wouldn't have any paramedics, but they do have EMTs, and they could support the paramedics of the town while maybe driving the ambulance to the hospital, instead of sending one of the EMTs or paramedics to drive to the hospital, you could have a fireman drive to the hospital. So there's some potential there to get them involved, and I would hope that we would start having some discussion with them about possibly helping out and getting involved in the EMS program. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Denny.
I'm going to support this, because right now, I don't want to delay it any longer, and maybe the fire departments is a good idea, but we already had another resignation, and we're not able to put four ambulances on the road during the day, we're lucky we're having three, sometimes we're having two. Lately, we've had ambulances from out of town and also from Hartford, so if you're laying on your floor, to me, it's a public safety thing, and I'm supporting it, thank you.
Councilor Ungary.
I'm going to go on record as supporting it for right now, I think the EMS, that whole crew is being overworked and they're fatigued right now, and perhaps we can help get them out of that, and then relook at it again with next year's budget and address the fire departments.
Anyone else?
My only issue, as we've talked about, is it's a budgetary issue here, that, and again, it's not anyone's fault other than how we went through the budget, and I take budgeting very seriously, and I'm sorry, it drives me nuts when we get recommendations and then we find out mid-year that it's, you know, it's an emergency, and so I have to admit, I have a little bit of cynicism to me, and I know that's probably not a good thing, but that's just the way I am, and really, that's what, I mean, I think that's what bothers me about all this, not that, I understand the safety issue and I agree, I mean, if we're going to provide this service, we've got to do a good job of providing it. But I think there's things that the people in town need to understand, that again, we're running a deficit, and that's part of the issue, and I think, you know, again, as we're going into, every budget's tight, that people need to understand that, you know, there's things that we're not going to be able to collect, even with a full staff, that we're not willing to collect, and they need to be, understand, if that's a service we're going to provide, then we're willing to, again, to subsidize the taxpayers with it. That's all I want to make sure people understand, that we're going to be subsidizing this to provide this service. That's my only, you know, my only stance on this, not that it's not a needed service because it is, but everything's needed in town, so, you know, and I'll just leave it at that.
Deputy Mayor Susak, then Town Manager.
I am going to support it, Peter said it best, we need to reach out to the fire departments. Goes against my grain to use unallocated funds to pay salaries. If I have to use unallocated funds, I really like goods that are going to stay for, you know, a number of years. And I think everybody out there needs to understand how this council works. This council works that if we don't get six yes votes, it doesn't pass. It isn't a majority thing, it isn't, you know, a split, this council doesn't do anything unless we get six votes, so I will be supporting this.
Anyone else? Chris.
Yes, thank you. As we had previously discussed, this is of critical importance, and I understand probably better than most, having been public safety director for 10 years, all of the issues surrounding EMS, the use of fire departments, you know, I was critical in bringing them on as a supplemental first responder, getting medical approval to do that, they weren't allowed to, so that they are on our license during the day. But one of the deficits, and what you must understand, is the state regulates our license and has to approve major changes to it, takes a long time, it's not going to happen in the short term. And number two, one of the critical components here is, we run a 24/7 operation, paramedic level service, the fire departments, for most of the departments, can only provide assistance during the day, so you've got to provide for your residents that night, and that's one of the reasons they, you know, basically are doing the supplemental first responder, and I'm open, we meet with them every couple of weeks to discuss it, but we can't wait for that discussion to conclude. So I know Joey wasn't present during the last discussion where we discussed this more thoroughly. I would just say, if you really think you don't have the votes to do it, I know that Councilman Arnone and Crissati do support it, I would ask you to table it and bring it back, because if we don't do this tonight, we have lost another paramedic. We are not only staffing less than four ambulances, we're not staffing three, some days it's two. And, you know, staffing, you have to look at it, police it changes, it changes with EMS, but we had 22, they had said frozen positions in the last budget, let's look with some going less, and now we've seen over the period of time that we've gone, we've dropped down, that we can't address the call volume. So we're relying on mutual aid, which means your residents are waiting now on a regular basis for ambulances coming from Hartford. Do you want your family to wait for an ambulance to come to Hartford in an emergency? I'm not going to be the one to tell them that we decided against that and that they're going to have to wait, this is life and death, I'm not exaggerating it, I'm passionate about it, but we have seen, we've been including it in the par every week, we've had an increase in call volume, we have less people to go, we've had eight workman's comp injuries because people are working so many overtime shifts, they're fatigued, and as we've seen, somebody left as a result of the work conditions. So I didn't want to have to say all that, but it's that critical for me to prevail upon you, that we need to do this now, I promise, I will talk to the fire departments, I'll look for other ways, we've already looked and addressed the collection of billing, we had that at the governance, we had our bill person come on to say and talk about collection.
Are we doing that yet? So maybe that's...
That's going to be coming on the upcoming agenda for billing, we're going to heighten the collections, but what I want to tell you in the short term, I don't think we can wait, and this also will increase, they project the lost revenue, since we've dropped the number of calls, they think is about $75,000 to $100,000 that we're going to lose a year, that's about what it costs to replace these people. Now, even if it didn't, I would still recommend it. So I just would prevail upon you, if you think you have, you know, the six to do it this evening, but if you don't, I would just ask for patience to continue it, because this is of critical importance, and as I said, once we reach a point where we lose so many employees, the system's going to be in trouble. And I just want to say to you, we've looked at about, you know, outsourcing, most communities don't have paramedic level service like Enfield does 24/7, we're really the best service in the state of Connecticut, one of the few municipal, because of that, you have control of our crews, our quality, working with our medical provider. Once we lose that, you then would have to go to an outside provider, they charge sometimes a million or a million-two a year just to give you the service, they make a promise, they don't have the paramedic ambulances in your town, they're outside, you wait for them to come, and then you've dismantled it, and you're at the whim of a private company, and the cost just ratchets up, 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 up. So I think we have a really good service, we work well with the fire departments, I pledge to you to continue to explore, I understand that direction, if we can utilize them in a way in the next budget to reduce costs, I will do that, I will recommend it to you, but at this point, I really am telling you, we need to replace these people, I don't want something untoward to happen to one of our residents.
Ready, any other, Councilor Bosco?
I will make sure that I vote yes, as long as I get your word that you'll, A, look into either having assist with the fire department, or private. We cannot be going the way we're going with numbers, I mean, it just may have to be that from a certain time on, we need to get a private ambulance in here to cover it.
And I've asked for the information, that's why we did the billing, you know that my word is my bond, I give you my word, I'll look at both of those, and again, sincerely, and with an eye to give you the best facts, not to sway the outcome.
I will...
Who gave you the BLIT review committee, so you know we can keep our promises.
I will vote differently if I get your word, that one way or another, you'll keep track of it with the fire department, or private, or whatever, because I know when we had the last one, when we had the paramedics in from AMR, didn't cost the town anything, the reason why we did it is because it was, some of the residents had to pay, and, but the problem is, we may have to do that, because, you know, 45,000 people, you know, just like I've said before, can't pay for 1,000 people, you know, it's just, we have to start looking at things different, so...
I will do that, we have a meeting with the fire departments to discuss a new computer dispatch system, and I will bring it up at that meeting next Thursday, and I've already asked for some of that information about the cost of outside providers, that's why I knew that since we last did it, the costs have gone up. But I will give you all the information, and that's my job, and your job is to set policy, so I think everybody is comfortable with that.
Okay.
So, and I have to admit, I was, this is the budgeting aspect that still bothers me very much, at some point, and maybe this for budgeting, I also at some point want to see a five-year history of our workman's comp and disability claims.
For the whole time?
For the whole time, I'm not trying to, but I think we need to compare ourselves to other towns, because I think, and we do hear that as a common theme, that we have a lot of people on disability.
Well, you know what, we should look at the ambulance too, because if...
It's all in together, yeah, I said it's all together.
Have their numbers, because if something has to happen, and we got to go private.
Right.
Again, this way, we know what the actual savings would be to the town of Enfield, because we wouldn't have the workman's comp anymore.
Right. And thank you for your explanation.
And I'll get that information as well, thank you for your consideration.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Bosco.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Denny.
Four.
Councilor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Four.
Councilor Ungary.
Four.
There's eight in favor, none against, and no, no, I'm sorry, it's seven.
Item F, excuse me, item G, so can I read the whereas', and someone wave the rest of the writing, or do you want me to go through everything? Yeah, okay. So I, item G, resolution to establish the John F. Kennedy School of Renovation Building Committee, whereas on November 6, 2018, the voters of the town of Enfield approved the referendum authorizing the expenditure of $84,373,294 for the reconstruction and renovation of the John F. Kennedy Middle School, and whereas J.C.J. Architecture has prepared a proposed plan for renovation, and whereas the town council is authorized to appoint a building committee for the project, and to authorize said building committee to prepare schematics drawings, to outline specifications for the project, construct the project, contract with contractors, and others on behalf of the town for the project, and approve design construction expenditures.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Denny, seconded by Councilor Sikala. So I don't think we need an explanation, other than this is to establish the John F. Kennedy Building Committee, that was passed, the referendum was passed, so I don't know if there's anything specific you want to address here, other than...
No, we're going by the same timeframe we used in the successful high school project, and I think it was so wonderful and fortuitous that you were honoring the building committee from the high school, because they are the role model for how we should proceed, the template for this, and I hope you are able to attract just as many dedicated people to that committee as you had on the last one, because I think it would ensure our success, and I'm just glad that we're so close in time, that we have an example of the way to do it right, and we can use that, as I say, for a blueprint with JFK going forward, and make that a success too. that a success too.
Counselor Falk?
Out of curiosity, how is the membership going to be determined? For the public, so they can hear it on TV.
If you wanna, basically, we're gonna, I don't know if you wanna read it or, it has section two to Counselor Sikala's point. Building committee will consist of nine regular members, two alternatives to serve at the pleasure of the town council. The town shall designate the chair of the billing committee. The committee shall designate its vice chair and secretary. The committee shall act as a school building committee, as a school building committee for the project pursuant to Connecticut General Statute ten dash two-nine-one for the applicable regulations of the State Department of Education. There should be four non-voting liaisons to the committee, as follows, two members of the town council, two members of the board of education, the town manager, may appoint staff liaisons as he deems appropriate. Any committee member who is absent for three consecutive meetings shall be deemed to have resigned from his or her seat.
So all applications for this go through the town manager, like.
Yes, what we were waiting, we actually had already put up on the website that there's gonna be a building committee. We didn't wanna actively solicit applications until you approve this and that will go up again tomorrow. I hope with all the things we're putting on the website, it doesn't crash, but that was our intent. And we'll, we'll do a press release too.
Press release, right.
And we were, we were waiting, the mayor asked me about this and we said, we don't wanna get ahead of our wagon until you approved it, we didn't wanna.
Okay.
And we are, we are looking for construction-related experience, if possible.
Right.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Falk?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Susak?
Four.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
There's eight in favor, none against, and no extensions.
Item H, I don't have a resolution? I don't have, oh, you just, oh. Thank you. Thanks, sorry about that. I got it. It is. I'm sorry, item H, I apologize, folks. Discussion Resolution of Patrick Ward versus the town of Enfield. Resolve to approve settlement of litigation, Captain Patrick Joseph Ward versus the town of Enfield et al., docket number in eighteen dash two-one-nine-five. Be resolved, the Enfield Town Council hereby provides its consent to the town insurers, curma and travelers to settle a matter of Patrick Joseph Ward versus the town of Enfield et al., number eighteen dash two-one-nine-five. An amount of thirty thousand dollars persuaded to discussion with the town's legal counsel and executive session on November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, prepared by the town attorney office on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Motion by Counselor Falk, seconded by Counselor Denny. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Falk?
Just a question, I believe the town is responsible for paying twenty-five thousand and the insurance company picks up the additional five out of that thirty?
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sikala?
So, I have a lot to say about this, but I will try to limit it to a little. This is one of those situations where, like, it keeps you up at night, having to figure out how you're gonna vote for something like this. The way you feel morally and what's right is not exactly the way that you're gonna vote because it's not as responsible fiscally for the town of Enfield. So I need people to understand that this is not an easy decision. Believe me, nobody wants to try some of these cases more than me, but it's not always in the best interest of the residents of this town to fight something that's gonna cost exponentially much more to fight than if you settle it. Makes you feel icky, like I said, keeps you up at night, or at least it keeps me up at night, but in the end, it's the financially responsible thing to do.
Pro bono?
I do this pro bono.
Well said, well said. Anyone else? Counselor Bosco?
If this goes by what the other things went, we already spent this twenty-five thousand dollars already anyway. So it's not like the town is gonna be paying additional twenty-five, we already ate that twenty-five up, we're already paid. I'm not happy, just as Gina, this is really sickening when you have to sit here and you have to vote for something that's not right. But, again, it can cost the town now a deductible that we've already paid, or it can cost the town a heck of a lot more money in the end. So you're sorta putting a catch-22. Our backs are up against the wall and I think the right decision for the town is to accept it, even though it's really, like Gina said, icky. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just, Counselor Sikala's explanation is spot-on. You know, so here's where my fiscal conservatism gets overweight by my sense of, I can't stand being taken and my fairness, the fairness overtakes my fiscal conservatism, where at some point, you either gotta do, you gotta take it on the chin to do the right thing to hope to try to change public policy, or you just continue to allow, and again, we do everything here, every dollar counts, so I don't wanna certainly minimize that at all. But it's to a point where the laws are not being, in my opinion, being enforced for the folks who are actually following the law in this kind, these kind of situations. So can we, if this passes tonight, since we had some other issues why we couldn't be as, I don't, with some of the details of the numbers here, can we make sure that the public understands, you know, again, I know some folks are mentioning kind of high numbers, but really what, in theory, we could be on the hook for, I know it's an estimation, but I'd like to give real numbers, so it's not just us saying, we're doing this because we're afraid of maybe a fifty thousand dollar payout. This is significant dollars that would have to come out of contingency, basically, if we lost. And not that, and again, my sense of fairness wants to go to court and take it on.
I can just say this, and the only reason I'm gonna talk, 'cause it's a broader policy issue beyond, and the town attorney can certainly transmit any requests for more details to the attorney. Remember, we're not handling this, Attorney Talberg is. But as we have seen before, and because I was sitting where Maria was, I think I'm in the best position to describe the hammer clause. And that's under, these cases, we have to give consent to settle. Other cases, we don't. Negligence cases, or somebody, there's a car accident, we don't, the insurance company handles those, we really never hear about them. But these, they require to come to you to have you say, settle it. So in this case, once again, if you were not to settle it, then the carrier, and we had previously gotten the hammer clause letter, what would occur is, they then will say, you couldn't have settled the case for thirty thousand dollars. Starting tomorrow, you will now pay for Attorney Talberg and his fees, starting tomorrow. In this case, there was a lot of litigation, as Attorney Sikala is aware, there's an appeal pending, so we would have to go into federal court and pay his attorney's fees for the appeal.
It's not pro bono?
It's not. No, about three hundred to three hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour is not pro bono. So we'd be responsible for that. If it's resolved in our favor, they could appeal it. If we were to lose, and he said most of those cases would be upheld, you are then on the trial list. A trial, then, we would be responsible to pay for Attorney Talberg. If we were not to prevail, and it was a plaintiff's verdict, whatever that judgment is, say they awarded this plaintiff a hundred thousand dollars, you'd say, well, okay, it was three times the cost. Well, probably our attorney's fees would be equal to that. Then you have to pay the plaintiff's attorney's fees, and he said in the federal court, it's about, as I said, three hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. So I'm saying realistically, conservatively, if you were to say, damn the torpedoes, we're taking this one all the way, and you had those convictions, ultimately, you can never know, you could win outright, but the appeal, you're definitely gonna pay for that, that's not gonna be free, no matter who wins. And then if it were to go onto a trial, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars, and you have to turn to the taxpayers and say, well, whoops, could've settled it for thirty, and it was repugnant and disgusting, but we didn't do it.
And this plays into when we're trying to put more police on the street.
Yes.
More community police.
And you know, I think it's an important point, and you've all asked, and I think it's not speaking out of school, we always check with the police department.
Right.
Who is in accord with this. We check with the officer involved and he is in accord with this.
That's important for people to understand.
It's critically important, because I know this council, if the officers in the department said that, no, this is the one you have to take a stand on, I think I know the council well enough to say, despite the risk, you would do it. But the officers in the police department know, this is not abandoning them, actually, this is saving them from going through the trial. There is personal exposure to the officers on some of these cases, if we were to lose, and their career, so they're in accord with it. So I think as unpalatable as it is, once again, and hopefully for the last time, for a long time, you'll have to.
All right.
And vote to do it.
Well, again, great expl, I think this is important for people to understand, I think, 'cause I think just what we've gone through over the last few years.
Yes.
I think it's important, since we can explain it, you know, because we're not sort of held under some, you know, what we were kind of the gag order, whatever we were on before, that this is not, and sometimes it, we, again, when we listen, we wanna put more officers on the street, there is liability that unfortunately, because of, and it has to be honest, this is a frivolous case, that we have to make decisions because of that.
And I'll just let you know as well, part of it is, there's cycles.
Right.
And we're not casting or making determinations, but our attorney, who has tried many of these cases, has said, we are in a cycle where juries are very sympathetic to these individuals despite the facts, despite how strong a case the town is. And the federal judges are inured to be more empathetic and sympathetic, to the point where a couple of cases he recently tried, where they won, the federal judge put it aside and reinstated and entered a verdict for the plaintiff. After a jury of our peers said the town or the police did nothing wrong. So we have to be cognizant that that's the environment, maybe the pendulum will sway the other way. You'll have a case where we go, you know what, we draw the line in the sand and, you know, we're in a more favorable circumstance and you say, this is, we're trying it. So, but you know what? That's not tonight.
Again, it's Counselor Sikala's explanation, Counselor Bosco's yours, I mean, it's almost like, hey, we're making bad public policy 'cause we have to. I mean, I'm not afraid to admit that the fact that this is something we really don't want to do. And, but sometimes making bad policy is the right thing to do. Any other comments? Thank you very much for everyone's explanation on this. Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Falk?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Susak?
It should never be unanimous against.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Seven in favor, one against, and no extensions.
Very good. Item sixteen, public communications. Anyone like to speak for the public? No? Hey, yes, Lucian, you're sitting there, I mean.
At least we're just happy Thanksgiving.
No, it's not a happy Thanksgiving. Lucian LaFaye, fifty-four Camberly Drive. I just wanna express, I try to come to a lot of these meetings and I hope the townspeople watch this on TV to know what you guys go through. You know, tonight is a prime example. I don't understand why Morias don't have more gray hair than you do. So I just hope the town appreciates.
Beauty, Lucian, beauty.
This council does, and to remind them that you guys get zero dollars for what you're doing. And a lot of them don't understand that. You know, to sit here and watch this firsthand in front of me, I just hope a lot of the town people watch this on ETV, YouTube, wherever it gets broadcast, so they can understand what's going on in this town.
Thank you very much, sir.
That's it.
Thank you.
And again, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
You too.